Happy Birthday, Dr. Green. Happy Birthday to you.
I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up, live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal.
Yeah, isn't it amazing how a man can find himself alone?
My children, children, who one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character.
He climbs on up the hill, on a rock on which he stands. He looks back at the crowd, he looks down at his hands and he says.
I have a dream.
I am a difference maker.
I have a dream.
Cause I am a difference maker, oh I am the only one that speaks to him. I am the friendliest of friends of God.
There's freedom rings from every citizen that ever happened, from every state and every city. We will be able to speed up that day when all the poor children, black men and white men, will be able to join hands and think.
Cause I am a difference maker, oh I am the only one that speaks to him. I am the friendliest of friends of God.
Free at last, free at last, thanks for the mighty, feel free at last.
Nosotros somos el mundo.
We are, we are the children.
We are the children.
We are the ones who make a brighter day so that star keeps it.
That star keeps it.
There's a choice to make here, we're saving our own lives. It's true we'll make a better day just you and me. We are the world, we are the children. We are the ones who make a brighter day so that star keeps it. There's a choice to make here, we're saving our own lives. It's true we'll make a better day just you and me.
It's true we'll make a better day just you and me.
Good evening, welcome to our regularly scheduled January 16, 2024 board meeting. I want to take this opportunity to welcome all of our visitors. And of course, you are also our friends, but if we have any principals or administrators, if you would just wave so we can say thank you so much for all that you do. Up next, we will have our inspiration, Ms. McCray.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute.
So my inspiration today is maybe relevant as we all might hibernate this week and this weekend in this cold, we might take some time to slow down a little bit. And the inspiration is by Ann Lomott. It says, "Almost everything will work again if you unplug it for a few minutes, including you."
Very good, thank you very much. And next, we will have Diamond Magnet Academy scholars to lead us in our pledge. Pledge and character work. Hello.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Richard Stans, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
My name is Joshua and plus, lack a man, fourth grade.
My name is David Dixon, I am, and I am also in the fourth grade.
My name is Nadia Sares, I am in the fourth grade.
January's care of the word of the month is kindness. Kindness means gentle, willing to help, friendly, courteous, and considerate.
My name is Ariana and I'm in fifth grade.
Guys, I would like to start off by just saying thank you so much to Dr. Lewis and to the school board for inviting us here and to say the pledge for you and allowing us to introduce some of our amazing Diamond Dolphins. And thinking about who would represent our school, then I thought that it would be a perfect fit for our not one, but two recently award-winning Lego Robotics teams to be able to come and share with you guys tonight. The Dazzling Dolphins are coached by Ms. Gina Davis and the Diamond Gems are coached by Mr. Jacob Elliott. And recently, they competed in the first Lego Robotics competition at Columbus State and they were awarded the top recognition for their bracket, the Champions Award. And this is the first, yes, absolutely. This is the first time that Diamond has taken two teams to competition. It's also the first time that we have won the Champions Award. So to come out with both teams, we were very excited about the accomplishments that both of these teams have had. I also wanted to share with the board that being the only state STEM certified school here in Muskogee County, we recently, this past fall, went through the recertification process successfully. And we were the first school in the state of Georgia to go through the recertification process using the new, more rigorous state criteria. So we were very excited about that accomplishment as well.
Awesome, awesome.
We will have the state school superintendent that'll be joining us to present the banner. And so I hope that some of you will be able to come out and celebrate with us. We did want to bring a couple of things. Some of the things that you have in front of you are some fresh collards grown by our students in our diamond gardens, as well as succulent plants that were grown in our greenhouse and planted by our students. So I will turn it over to the boys and girls.
As Muskogee County's only state certified STEM school, Diamond's theme this year is "Together We Grow." Our STEM driving question is how can we get Diamond Magnet Academy provide resources to aid in food insecurity and food scarcity in our community?
My name is Morgan Scott, I'm a fifth grader at Diamond.
Each grade level has a part in solving the problem of food insecurity. Our students plant healthy vegetables and attract pollinators to our diamond learning and healing garden, make compost to improve our soil quality, and use infographics and web designs to educate our school and community about the problem and how to help.
Also, fifth grade has created a working food pantry called the Diamond Gem Food Lager that feeds Diamond students and our surrounding neighbors. The projects are a part of the interdisciplinary way that we learn our standards and grow as citizens.
Hi, my name is Raven Ratcliffe and I'm a fifth grader at Diamond.
There are many resources on campus that help us to learn, like the raised bed gardens where we grow vegetables and plants. We also grow plants inside our greenhouse and on the living wall that surrounds our outdoor classroom. We raise butterflies in the butterfly atrium and we've planted pollinator beds to attract native pollinators to the garden. We learn many skills in our technology lab where we are working on coding, robotics, web design, and 3D printing.
My name is Brendan Hudson and I'm a fifth grader at Diamond.
We would not be able to do all of this without community support. We have fantastic community partnerships that help us to learn what we need to know to help solve problems, support our projects, and provide experiences outside of the classroom. We have too many partnerships to be able to recognize them all, but we work with master gardeners, graphic designers, food educators, artists, and philanthropic organizations to help prepare us for college and career. My name is Zoe Daniel and I'm a fifth grader at Diamond.
My favorite thing about Diamond is the teachers. They take an interest in our abilities and help us develop our potential. My name is Antonio Page Jr. and I'm a fifth grader at Diamond.
My favorite thing about Diamond is when we do our battle box competition, when we build our battle box with balloons and try to pop the other team's balloon. I also like coding on the computer and different robots. My name is Jason Scrutins and I'm in the fifth grade in Diamond.
My favorite thing about Diamond is when we have Career Day and we learn about the jobs people do in our community.
My name is Mackenzie Mercer and I'm a fourth grader at Diamond.
Hi, I'm Jacob Elliott and I am the coach of the Diamond Dolphin Gem Robotics Team. And we have a couple of students here who are going to tell you about our innovation project for First Lego League.
In First Lego League, this year's theme is masterpiece. How can we use art to inform others? For our innovation project, we decided to highlight what are we doing at Diamond with food insecurity. We use artwork to show the percentage of people in America that our food is secure, which means the amount of people that don't know where they will get their next meal.
My name is Yanza Rivera and I'm a fourth grader at Diamond.
Using macaroni noodles, we created infographic of the United States illustrated that 10% of the Americans are food insecure. In Muskogee County, this number is even higher, 15%. As you have heard, at Diamond, we are finding ways to help lower food insecurity in our community.
My name is Skylar Wardlaw and I'm a fourth grader.
Hi, I'm Gina Davis and I am the coach of the Dazzling Dolphin Robotics Team. And so these next two students are going to tell you about our innovation project.
When choosing our innovation project, I suggested we choose the issue of depression to research. At first, we didn't really think it matched the theme of masterpiece, but as we kept brainstorming, we realized that the arts and art therapy can make a huge impact in people who have anxiety and depression. We researched things such as how music and colors affect mood, how paintings and journalism and other creative outlets assist with negative feelings, and how things can help children.
My name is Jackson Simmons and I'm a fifth grader at Diamond.
For our project, we wanted to educate our community on what we learned. We created infographics as a visual with our research. We created QR codes to share with parents and community members at our literacy under the star event at school. We also made a model of a sensory room that we would like to create in our school that has areas for all these art therapies that can help kids at Diamond.
My name is Josiah Camacho and I am a fifth grader.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here and share with you about our school and our robotics teams. We are very proud of the many things we do at Diamond and the opportunities that students have for hands-on learning. We would like to invite each of you to come and visit us at Diamond and see for yourself how all of the amazing ways we shine bright at Diamond every day.
My name is Courtney Sares and I am a fifth grader at Diamond.
Awesome, awesome. And the principal is Mrs. Wilson. And I want all the parents to stand back up. We want to say thank you so much for all that you do in supporting the boys and girls and supporting public education. You guys are awesome, that is so super. We want to thank you for our dinner and the water coolers and a plant that's probably pet-proof. So I appreciate that so very much. We are so very proud of you and I am really, really excited and look forward to seeing all the amazing things that you do.
And to the teachers and principal and all the students, we know CCRPI is important, but I would maintain that STEM, STEAM, to agriculture, and community service back to serving others, I think that's what we all aspire, all of our students to do going forward. So I think you're successful regardless of whatever numbers are out there, those are important. But this is where the real learning happens and the real service begins. So congratulations, well done, great job, robotics, all of you.
Oh, I just wanted to add one thing. I so enjoyed this presentation, thank you, boys and girls. And I appreciate the staff and the principal for putting it together and letting us know what's going on at the school. I just found this fascinating, all the things that you are doing. Like Dr. Lewis said, you know, we need to know all of this that's going on at our schools. And I listened intensely at everything that Diamond had, and I love the boys and girls, they sounded like newscasters. My name is, and I am the fifth grader, they were so good, it was such a good presentation, thank you for doing it.
And I've had the privilege of going to Diamond and I would encourage all of you to come out and visit the raised beds they're doing, watching the kids, the kids do all of this.
The hydroponics.
Yeah, hydroponics, all the things they're doing with that, the ratios and all the things they're figuring out as far as fertilizer, all that. And robotics, obviously you all are really plugged into the robotics. With all due respect, unplugged, but in this case, they're plugged in and we appreciate that. But there's a big competition going on this Saturday as well in robotics and we have a number of our schools participating. But all of these things are opportunities for kids to be involved with and you all are taking full advantage of that, so congratulations, great job. Thank you for.
All right, 3.04, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Buckner, hand vote, please, raise your hand. All right, that passes and I will turn it over to Mr. Ellington as we conduct our annual board leadership elections. Mr. Ellington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're now at item 2.02, which will be the election of board chairman, and 2.03, the election of board vice chairman. So just for your recollection, because it's been a year since we've done this, a nomination, a vote, and a minimum of five affirmative votes are needed to carry an election to become a chair or vice chair. A nomination from the floor does not need a second. So at this time, I'll open the floor to nominations for the position of chair.
And also, Mr. Ellington, Ms. Tillery is on Zoom.
Okay, great.
I would like to nominate Representative Green for chair.
There any other nominations for that position? If not, then the nominations are closed and I'll now call for a vote on the motion that Pat Hugley Green serves as chair of the board. All in favor, raise your hand. And is Ms. Tillery voting? Okay, any opposed? All right, so that motion passes and Pat has been reelected as board chair. So I'll now open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Lori McRae.
All right, Ms. McRae. Any other nominations for the position of vice chair? All right, hearing none. I'll now call for the vote for Ms. Lori McRae to serve as the board's vice chair for this coming year. All in favor, please raise your hand. And any opposed? All right, that carries, congratulations, Ms. Green and Ms. McRae, and thank you for your service. And I guess I turn it back over to you now, Madam Chair, for the next part, which is the appointment of legal counsel and the other.
I would just like to speak on behalf of my cabinet, but also I think the other board members as well. We just want to thank you all for your willingness to serve in this leadership capacity. We know that it's additional responsibilities and we thank you for your willingness to serve. And I appreciate the fact that we have continuity going forward and that's always positive whenever you can maintain continuity going forward in an organization like this. So congratulations and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you so very much. I do want to say to our exemplary board members, thank you so much for the support. Thank you so much for your dedication to service and thank your families as well. But I do appreciate the opportunity to lead the board as chair and we look forward to a fantastic 2024. Ms. Buckner, or first Ms. McRae.
I'll just say ditto, thank y'all very much for the vote of support and for the continuation of leadership, I appreciate it, congratulations.
I was going to make a motion for the next item.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
As we go into 2.04, the appointment of legal counsel, Ms. Buckner.
I'd like to make a motion that we have Hall, Booth, and Smith for our legal. I'm sorry, for our attorneys, for our legal.
And parliamentary. Second by Ms. Chambers.
Appoint legal counsel.
2.04. So that was a motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Chambers. Hand vote, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you so very much, that passes. Thank you to Hall, Booth, Smith for keeping us on the straight and narrow. And then 2.05 is the appointment of secretary, parliamentary, and treasurer to the board. And according with our, accordance with our policy BBA, the superintendent serves as the secretary, legal counsel serves as the parliamentary, and our CFO serves as our treasurer. And I would need a motion for that. All right, motion by Ms. Frey, second by Ms. Chambers, all in favor, hand vote. For Ms. Tillery, all right, thank you so very much and that passes. Now, I've already recognized our visitors and I do want to go back and recognize Alan Harkness from our library and I don't see Mary Ann Rigner, or is there a representative? All right, from the museum. All right, from the museum. So thank you always, uh, for being our, being our partners. District-wide recognitions. Ms. Kimberly Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Kimberly Wright, Director of Communications, and this is our district recognitions. I would like to ask the board permission to go in a different order today due to the cast of, uh, Raina McCullers had to rehearse. So I'm gonna go on this order and congratulate them.
We don't want to miss rehearsal.
Congratulations to Raina McCullers' troupe for placing second in the state A Division Two with Memphis School Edition at the 2023 One Act Play State Championships in November. Congratulations also goes to KJ Wilson for winning Best Actor. Unfortunately, KJ was here, but he had to leave and go to rehearsal. So I want to tell you what I found out today about KJ as well. We found out today that KJ is also a dance major. He attended the Alvin Ailey Dance Summer 2023 Intensive. He gained admission to nationally ranked collegiate dance programs and passed the pre-screening audition for the admissions to the Juilliard School. KJ will be traveling to New York for the in-person audition in February. So kudos to KJ.
Good job, KJ.
And congratulations to the staff. You can introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Nikki Serta. I'm in the 10th grade.
Hi, my name is Ariana Lee and I am in the 11th grade.
Hello, my name is Silas Goodwin and I am in the 10th grade.
Hi, my name is Lea Young and I am a senior and come see Partum Opus, while KJ is not here, this Friday and Saturday at seven thirty. And also see She Kills Monsters, February ninth and 10.
Thank you. Congratulations to you all again.
Awesome. Congratulations to you all. I know, don't be late. Don't be late. You can hand the microphone out there. Don't be late. And if you see KJ dance, you will understand all of what Ms. Wright talked about. All of his opportunities. Quite an amazing kid. Thank you, Ms. Wright. And the principal is here, Dr. Williams. Thank you, sir. Friday at? Seven thirty? Seven, seven o'clock, Ms. Buckner, seven. Same time? Same time Saturday? Okay.
On Monday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Alpha Onward and Upward Foundation presented Dr. David F. Lewis, Superintendent of Education with the Thirty-Eighth Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Unity Award. In line with the purpose of the award, Dr. Lewis has pro- promoted and exemplified the philosophies of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by consistently promoting unity in the community while serving as a positive influence in the economic, social and academic empower- empowerment of its citizens. In addition, the foundation provides financial resources to deserving high school seniors in Columbus, Fort Moore, Phoenix City areas that are seeking a college education. Congratulations, Dr. Lewis.
Well, it was quite a surprise to me yesterday morning, so, uh, I'm, I'm gonna thank Florine Dawkins, Karen Jones and, and my wife for arranging that.
Great secret keepers.
They, they, they truly are, but it was truly, I, I want to thank Alpha Phi Alpha. Uh, but like, nobody ex- uh, ever receives an award like that without recognizing it takes a lot of people to help you. And unity is something we're trying to work toward. Um, it's that whole idea about creating we. Uh, I want to thank the board for your ongoing support and commitment to the whole, uh, idea about unity in our community. Um, and of course, uh, I'd always be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to say thank you to my wife because she has been with me for forty-three years and there's a special place in heaven for that in, in, in itself. Uh, but aside from the fact that she has been there to support me in all my endeavors when all the events I go to and, and she attends many of those as well. So I just want to take this opportunity to recognize and spotlight her. But again, just thank, uh, all of our team. Um, and for the people in the community who work and realize the value and importance of education. And as I shared yesterday at the breakfast, just recognizing and paraphrasing, uh, Dr. King's work and, and one of his quotes is that we're not where we ought to be. We're not where we, uh, we should be and we're not where we're gonna be, but thank God we're not where we used to be. So, working together, we're gonna continue to push forward and giving students the options and the opportunities they deserve through education. And that requires, as I've said from forever, it's gonna, it's not just schools cannot do this work alone. It takes the community. It takes schools, it takes families and it takes community partners all working collaboratively. And that's something very special and unique about Columbus that I have found, uh, to be the case over the last, uh, going now eleven years. So I just thank everyone, uh, for the honor of the award, but more importantly, for the work that it represents on behalf of everyone in our community. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And last but not least, congratulations to former Spencer High School grad and Eastern Michigan University honors freshman, Anya Johnson, who has managed to acquire ten scholarships on top of her Gates and Presidential scholarships to aid in funding her venture into the M E M E M U Aviation Flight Technology Program. Johnson and M E M U, I'm sorry, Presidential Scholar has achieved a significant milestone by becoming the first recipient from Eastern Michigan University to be awarded the Gates Scholarship. This prestigious scholarship granted annually to only three hundred students nationwide from a pool of over thirty-five thousand applicants. It's a highly selective Last Dollar Scholarship designed for exceptional minority students exhibiting outstanding leadership qualities. To qualify, applicants must graduate in the top ten percent of their high school class and demonstrate exemplary personal success skills. Congratulations, Anya Johnson.
I think she's a twenty twenty-three graduate for Spencer.
Oh, okay, yeah. I just said it formally.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm thinking out loud. I think she's a twenty twenty-three graduate. Very proud of her.
Yes, yes, yes.
What was that? Put your mic, Ms. Buckner.
Just making sure we noted that the initial scholarship was a hundred thousand for, uh, undergraduate. And beyond that, to the flight school, there's an additional eighty thousand dollars. So that's a good thing to have, this young lady.
I think that'll get her through her pilot's license. All the way through. She wants to be, she's aspiring to be a pilot.
I now yield to Cory Neal to present the Power of We Award. And that concludes the district recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Good evening. The Power of We Award winner for the month of January twenty twenty-four is Christina Miles. Give her a hand as she comes down. Christina Miles has been with the district for four years. Within this time, she has displayed a disposition to learn from others as well as help others in need. Whether she's taken the initiative to meet with the grant administrators to keep them up to date of their financial status, assisting team members with daily tasks and being a listening ear for all that needs one. Or even being available to take on new projects. She does all of this willingly and with a gigantic smile. Her readiness to continuously learn and improve in her position, serving the needs of others and treating others with dignity and respect clearly demonstrates that she embodies the power of we. Again, the Power of We Award winner is Christina Miles from the Finance Department, Senior Staff Accountant. Give her a hand.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We'd like for your family to please stand. Thank you so much. One, two shy to stand. We understand. We got it. But congratulations again. Thank you for all that you do. All right, we at the point on our agenda for our public agenda. And we have listed Ms. Sadia Abdul and Mr. David Young. You can come in that order. Ms., uh, Ms. Abdul, if you would make your way. Um, all official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public. However, the board may meet in executive session. Speakers' remarks should be directed to the board and shall be limited to five minutes. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. If an individual desires to speak, they may contact the superintendent's office to be placed on the agenda. The board meeting or the work session is not the appropriate place to address either criticisms of particular employees or individual parent complaints when such complaints have not first been addressed to the attention of the appropriate administrator for resolution. Citizens are encouraged to follow normal channels to address individual parent complaints or concerns. And let me turn your mic on. Thank you so much for joining us, Ms. Sadia Abdul. Thank you so much. I have my sidekick with me today who refused to stay at home, even though I told her she'd been a long-born meeting with no device. Even that could convince her to stay home. But anyway, she's, she's my future little advocate.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Ever I was, she was the best kid ever.
She, she's convinced that I was the best kid ever. She doesn't know my history. That's okay. Okay, so in honor of Dr. King, I want to, um, share with you his quote, um, about education. I have the audacity to believe that peoples everywhere can have three meals a day for their bodies, education and culture for their minds and dignity, equality and freedom for their spirits. I have said to my children, I'm going to work and do everything that I can, can do to see that you get a good education. I don't ever want you to forget that there are millions of God's children who will not and cannot get a good education. And I don't want you feeling that you are better than they are. For you will never be what you ought to be until they are what they ought to be. We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. In this unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late. This is no time for apathy or complacency. This is a time for vigorous and positive action. As each of you sit on that board, I really want you to think about the thirty thousand plus students in Muskogee County schools that are counting on you and the decisions that you make, whether you hold the school district accountable, whether you serve them with true honor. That's your role. Thank you.
Gladys, guys.
Bye-bye. Thank you so much, Ms. Abdul. Mr. David Young?
Thank y'all. I'm back again. I, uh, I don't like coming here. I promise I don't. My daughter even tells me I'm lame for coming to these school board meetings and complaining about things, but we've got another East Plus vote coming up. And I'm very much against it because I don't feel like I'm getting my money's worth. I've got two kids going to the same high school I went to thirty years ago and for PE, they sit on the bleachers. I'm not exaggerating. I'm not stretching the truth on that. They sit on the bleachers. They do absolutely nothing. Both of them have already gone through PE and that's what they did all year. I've got a daughter, my son even tells me, Dad, don't complain. It's a free A. I don't want a free A. I want my money's worth. Uh, my, my daughter told me at the beginning of the school year, she told my wife and I she'd like to sign up for healthcare. She thought she might want to go into a nursing field or something like that. So great, we'll sign you up. We got her in. We even bought the little OR scrubs, a nursing attire that they wear in the medical field. There's no teacher. They haven't had one and they've done nothing in this class all year long. Nothing. We're halfway through the school year. I'm told a teacher's coming, but we're halfway through. English teacher last year left halfway through the school year, sent a bizarre email to all the parents and just left. We didn't get another English teacher. Another teacher from another class, another subject had to come in and babysit the class for the remainder of the year. I'm not getting my money's worth. I don't think these problems are unique to my kid's school. Do y'all think I'm getting my money's worth? What's the board gonna do about it? I hope y'all are gonna have some discussions and figure out how you're gonna get some teachers in front of these kids. I told y'all last time I was here about the cell phones. Dr. Hendrick is a great lady over at Shaw High School, one of the smartest principals in this district. She shared with me all the data, statistics and everything about how horrible cell phones are in schools, how they lead to excessive bullying, excessive cheating and higher suicide weights and rates in our teens. Nobody on this school board's contacted her to say, is that true? Do we need to maybe set a policy for that in the district? Y'all haven't done anything on that. So I'm against the East Plus. I hope the school board will support me on that because we need to get some teachers in front of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young.
Um, can we get, um, an update on, um, the vacancies for, um, teaching positions? Um, and what those positions are in critical area, areas so that we know. Um, I know that, uh, teacher shortage is a nationwide problem. That's not just a problem in Muskogee County. But I would just like to know, um, how many critical areas, um, are we missing, um, teachers for? And, um, I know that we have several programs in order to entice new teachers to come to Muskogee County. Um, and I know you did a presentation on incentives and things of that nature, so I know we're working on it. But can we get just a sort of a synopsis, a, a summary of where those, um, needs are?
Ms. Carter?
Yes, um, I do have a lot more detail. A- as a matter of fact, we've been preparing a great deal for, um, the efforts that have been being made and the progress that's being made for the board retreat. In general, we are definitely making progress in the right direction, but you're absolutely correct. It's a nationwide problem. It's not just Muskogee County School District. Uh, East Plus money does not contribute to that portion of how we address the concerns. They are, uh, local and national efforts, um, marketing, uh, partnerships. Uh, ESS has been a, 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 a part of that as well, especially for hard-to-fill schools, uh, in trying to determine the best ways in which we can find different avenues. Uh, because the number of people who are applying for becoming a teacher is lessening from year to year. And, um, ultimately what we're trying to do is find, um, we actually have six different ways that you can become a teacher. We're having to do strategic waivers, provisional hires and things like that in order to find an alternate route to find a more permanent solution. These are all things that we're doing to try to improve the situation. Uh, it is not resolved. Um, by no means are we there yet, but we absolutely are progressing in the right direction.
I would like some follow-up information on the nursing program at Shaw and what's going on there, if there's been a vacancy for that long. And, you know, how many teachers there are for that program, what effect that's having on the program and kind of what efforts have been made to try to find somebody to fill that.
I was, now, this is Matt Gray, uh, said about this.
Speak.
I was gonna say, we have, you know, and I'm not trying to expose anything here. Uh, Mr. Young, I, I don't know if he's still here. This, this is a conversation that we have all the time. We have this conversation with, um, um, Mrs. Carter. This is not the first time we have that conversation. We have that and we, we have questioned and she has given us the information on, um, the vacancies. Every month we get a report. We have asked her, um, I didn't look at it this time, but she even brings the report back in terms of, um, categorizing how many in certain categories. She, she brings this information back because we continue. She brings this information back because we continue to question and ask questions about why we need to, about all the different vacancies. And Shaw is no different from a lot of the schools. We have a lot of other schools that have vacancies, unfilled teachers for a period of time. Now, what was important is what she said about all the efforts that we have been making. She said it very quickly. She said it very, she just said, "We have done this. We have done that." We have been working on that, Mr. Young. We have been doing things. You know, she was saying that we even have our way to get teachers certified. We have, and she can speak to this better. But we have done lots of things to work on this. We have a long way to go, but we are, we are working on this. And I don't want to upset you about this next point. And the next point is that there's no correlation between the Splos and filling vacancies. I just want to make that. There's no, if one equal the other, there's no correlation for one and the other. But I understand your point. We talk about this all the time. We send her emails. We question all the time about all the various vacancies, and they have provided information on various things that they are doing. And maybe, Ms. Carter, we need to make sure that people know the things that we are doing, all the different things that you have put in place trying to get us, trying to fill our vacancies.
Thank you very much. The only thing that I will add is that with all of the recruiting efforts that our human resource division put forth, one thing is for certain. Every single principal works tirelessly and diligently to fill their vacancies. That's ongoing. The principals have become quite creative and innovative to fill vacancies. They do their own recruiting outside of the efforts from our human resources. And the thing about education is this, these people work on contracts. And so when the school year starts and they've signed their contract, it's probably gonna be a full year without the appropriate person in that seat. And that's a thing about education that I, that I wish that, not just Georgia, but I wish the state could do something differently about that. But they're under contract, and when they're out, they're out. But I promise you this, principals are scratching and turning over every leaf. And they're working very hard to staff their buildings, to identify their own plans, to move their school forward, to keep the children safe. I mean, I'm just speaking on behalf of the principals.
Well, I won't belabor other than the fact that we're trying to do very creative type things. We have our own Georgia TAP program. We're one of the few districts, maybe the only one in the state, that has our own TAP program to help develop teachers. We have developed a contract with the Teacher Preparation Program. We also have developed a contract with all of our, with Columbus State University that they, if they finish their requisite requirements for being an educator, they're guaranteed a contract, which no other district that I know of is doing that. And we tried to broaden our reach. We can't ask our HR department and principals to be the only hiring agents out there. So with our ESAR dollars, one of the ways we use that is every employee, that's 4,500 employees, has the opportunity to recommend someone for any job we have as far as a vacancy in the classroom or whatever else. And if they, if that employee clears all the clearances and works for the requisite amount of time, they get a $500 bonus. And those are all strategies that we put into place that are unique to Muskogee County that I feel like are.
And to interrupt you, the district has been paying out those bonuses.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. So again, we're trying to broaden our reach, but we know we're not where we want to be. But we are faced with the same shortage that is across the nation, across Georgia, and we're just trying to find a way to be better off than the others. And that's why we're trying to find creative strategies, but we are certainly open to trying others. So anybody has ideas, thoughts, please let us know because we are continuing to look for that and work with our post-secondary institutions and strategic waivers, bringing people in. And some of those, a lot of those people have come in and done a tremendous job. So anyone who's ever thought about being a teacher, we welcome you to come in. And if you work in a lateral profession and want to come into teaching, we can find a way to get you there. So again, if you're committed to kids and education, we can help you find that pathway. Thank you.
All right, we will move into our action agenda. Okay, I think I'm gonna have this jumping around tonight. The superintendent is asking us to approve the expansion of the one-time retention supplement to include all eligible school-based and district employees at specified full-time $1,000 and part-time $500 during the January 31, 2024 pay cycle. This incentive will support the approximate 4,500 employees of the Muskogee County School District. Motion by Ms. Frey, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any questions? All right, we're ready to vote. And this is for further clarification. This is the, this for the January, this month's pay cycle. And this is the $1,000 that the governor promised to certain groups of employees. One time. It will show up in your January pay stub and then $500 to the part-time employees. All right, that passes.
How the district goes above what the governor has done.
Go right in.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Because you want to, go ahead.
It's in the agenda item, but basically, the governor allocates funds based on our, basically, quality basic education funding. He sent, he, but through his order, sent $3,117,505,000 to cover the people who are designated at the state level. Of course, as we said, we have roughly 4,500 employees. And by extension, some of the funding does not cover all the employees that are in those specific classified positions that were categorized there by the governor in his original email. And then in discussion with the board, the idea was to extend that to all employees as part of that whole commitment to creating "we" and to understanding that it takes a full team, not anyone is more important than another. So that is the basis on which we've gone forward with extending that to ensure that all employees, whether they're full-time, get $1,000, part-time, get $500, and they're school-based and district-level employees based on that commitment to ensuring that we're working as part of the full team. How's some, more information you'd like to add to that?
No, I think, you know, just for layman's term, you know, we appreciate the board members and the administration being committed to including some of the groups that, you know, were left off the list, like school bus monitors and people in plant services. And so that was, that's just our commitment to making sure that we, you know, support the mission of "we," supporting everyone. Crossing guards.
Crossing guards.
Crossing guards are included.
Not only, not only do we have a shortage of teachers, we have a shortage of other employees also. And we need to retain everybody we can get, you know, everybody that we have. We need to retain them, and this is a way that we extend to other employees who are not eligible as classified by the governor.
One time.
One time.
It's a one-time retention payment. That's how it was promoted by the governor. And I'll just simply point out, everyone's, all of our team is important. I think we all recognize that, acknowledge that. You know, I've kiddingly said, but it's very true, when the toilet backs up, I'm the least important person in this building. You know, and tomorrow morning, our plant services people are gonna be out early, making sure that with all the cold weather, that 19, 20 degrees, whatever it might be, it's cold. And making sure that our buildings, facilities are operating the best they possibly can with that potential and really serious weather. So crossing guards, making sure kids get to school, it's just across the board. It's a team effort, teamwork, and we all work together.
Everyone is important.
Yeah, so.
Everyone is needed. Everyone is valued. All right, item 6.02. Motion by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. Frey to vote on our board meeting schedule for 2024. Ms. Chambers, what? Okay, well, did y'all catch that? Who made the motion? Ms. Chambers made the motion. Ms. Jackson seconded the motion. Make sure we get that straight. Now we're ready to vote. Okay, thank you. I guess I'm expecting it to show on this screen. All right, that passes. Item 6.03 is the revised construction budget at Hardaway. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. All right, that passes. Item, okay, Ms. Chambers? Which one is? Which East Plas, which year? 2020?
For the last project.
That project is coming from the 2020 East Plas. Yes.
Thank you, sir. All these projects probably are. 6.04 is the contract award for middle grades athletic upgrades. Was that Ms. Frey? All right, that was a motion by Ms. Frey. Y'all witnessed, and second by? Ms. Buckner. All right, we're ready to vote now. Ms. Blutwerth, did you want to add anything? Ms. Blutwerth, okay. All right, that motion passes. Next item is 6.05 is the contract award for Georgetown Elementary School Design HVAC Equipment Replacement. Motion by Mr. Cantrell, second by Ms. Buckner. Are there any additional questions? We're ready to vote now. All right, and that item passes. Final action item is 6.06 is the contract award to secure the vestibule at... Oh, is it multiple schools? Okay. The vestibule projects that are at several of the different schools. Are there, is there a motion? It's a motion by Ms. Buckner, by Ms. Chambers. Are there any additional questions? Okay, we're ready to vote now. All right, that item passes. And then finally, our consent agenda. We need anything pulled out or a question about any item under our consent agenda? Motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Frey to approve our consent agenda. We're ready to vote now. As always, we want to thank our public-private partnerships. We're very fortunate for all the donations that are made to our schools in the support of our community. And that item passes. All right, and then I will take a motion to convene. Sure, you recognize them. Go ahead.
Anyone else that was just appointed to the library board? Our new library board members? One? Thank you. Thank you for service.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving. Dr. Lewis?
As everyone knows, we have some pretty severe cold weather coming in tonight and through the remainder of the week and into the weekend. So we want to make sure everyone, parents, if you can help us with, I'm sure you're already doing so, but make sure the kids are dressed as warmly as possible. Making sure that if at all possible, if you can slow your going to the office or going to work, making sure the kids get to the bus stops, but not too long because there is gonna be a wind chill factor well up until 10 o'clock in the morning. That's gonna be something to consider. And then if you're taking your children to school, making sure that you're dropping off, make sure they do get, in fact, get inside. We're gonna make sure we have personnel there, make sure they get in and have our supervisor there, but we are not opening schools any, or earlier than usual. But we want to make sure that everybody knows that we will have them there. So everyone just cooperate with us over the next several days and adjust your work schedule to make sure our children are taken care of and are safe and kept out of the really bitter cold as much as possible. So that is something we just ask everyone to be careful about. And then again, typically, we'll see more traffic on these kind of days. So everyone just slow down and be careful and make sure you're in observance of our children and the more traffic on the roads.
And then we didn't, we also have some congratulations in order for our schools that were exiting.
Several of our schools, I don't have them all in front of me, but several of our schools are exiting the CSI list, but I can tell you right now, coming all the way off. Some of our more challenged schools, Martin Luther King Elementary, Fox came off all lists altogether, and J.D. Davis improved off the CSI list on the ATSI, which is just a subgroup that we're watching. Congratulations to all the schools. That's a tremendous amount of hard work.
Well, let me just, let me just highlight, there were several schools in what you call the East Region that did exceptionally well and. Um, that did exceptionally well and, um, very proud of, very proud of that, that east region. Um, and all of the schools that, that came off of the list. And so that's a testament to all the hard work, um, that our educators are putting in, that our principals and their leadership team are, are putting in. And, um, you know, I'm just really, really proud of that.
Absolutely.
I know there was, um, some type of incentive pay that you, that you did. Are you bringing that back to us?
Well, you've already approved it, so we're moving forward.
Okay, that's good. That's very good. I just wanted to make sure that we highlight that and make sure we clarify who's eligible.
Right, we're going through that now.
For that, for those pay, for that pay. All right, so board members, we do, I do need a motion to go into executive session for a legal matter. Ms. Buckner, uh, and second by Mr. Cantrell. Hand vote, all in favor, we can wave goodbye. There is no student appeal.